The June 25th, 2015 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Today, the pledge and the prayer will be led by the members of the Youth Department of the Red Oak Missionary Baptist Church. The prayer will be led by Donovan Brooks and the pledge will be led by Ashley Jeffrey, with all members. Please stand.
Lord, thank you for this beautiful day. We ask that you let this meeting go smoothly and efficiently as you desire. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. We are a little bit out of order this evening for some pressing issues, but we will explain that later. We will start with our action item, considering a resolution terminating the agreement with the Longview Chamber of Commerce formerly known as the Longview Partnership for services related to a convention and visitors bureau and for services related to the urban Main Street program. I have speaker cards and typically we'll wait to the citizen comments section to do that, but since these cards are all about this action item, we will allow you to speak now and then we will consider the action item. Michael Snell.
I live in Nugget Hill. I have an office in Nugget Hill, so if you're driving down Highway 80 and you see the old fire station, that's my office. So, I really just wanted to talk, I'm going to be, I'm Vice President of the Art Museum this year and then next year I'll be President. And really what I want to talk about a little bit is two things. One, the Art Museum moved downtown almost 18 years ago. We were behind Kilgore College and we moved and I think if you'll see, we actually helped influence, sort of started the revitalization of downtown before the Chamber even got involved. I think the downtown, we all can agree, looks so much better. And so, what I'm really here to say is, we like what's happened, but I'd like to speak specifically about the Art Museum and the other arts. Is I know that we're going to be talking about funding and all this comes to funding, how we pay our bills and how we promote the city of Longview. And I think we need to be cognizant that the arts in Longview present the first, one of the first pictures in Longview. And they're always desperate for funding. We've had some really generous people at the Art Museum. Ms. Crane helped pay off the building along with several other great gifts. Back 18 years ago, I was the President then when we paid it off. And so, we've had really generous institutions all along that have helped us, but I think that it's time that the city really sets at least a bar of some type of funding as part of this whole process with Chamber and everything else, where the arts at least get like a dedicated of the hot money, at least a 1% budget, and ought at least look at an art director that coordinates all the different art groups. Because there's a synergy, you can actually coordinate events, which I think would actually help raise attendance and also help fund the institution. So I think that it's really important that when we look at if we're changing, is that we need to also look at how we're funding other things specifically. And I think the arts really needs something they can count on every year, budget, because it's so crazy, so up and down. And so many of these places are brick and mortar downtown, that if you're doing the brick and mortar and then you have to bring in the outside activities for the attractions, it's very difficult. And we've, like I said, we've had great representatives in that Texas Bank and Trust gave us a new learning center. The Junior League has been great supporters. And I just think that it's some time, we need to not have it change up and down every year by the whim of, you know, to have a great presentation or something comes in. I think we need a floor so that we can keep Longview looking nice and also gives an outlet to kids that are not athletic, that gives them a different direction to look at. We have, you know, we have a school art competition every year. It's open to all the schools here in Longview. And that's something different that people don't necessarily know about all the time, but it's another outlet for our kids. So, I just think as we're talking about how we're going forward and how we're presenting the face of Longview, is I think we really need to consider how we're going to fund other things. And I think it should be more stable than the way that we're going right now. And I just hope that, you know, we consider it long-term. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before I continue with speakers, let me just make, let me make a few remarks about this, okay? And Mike, I appreciate your comments. Let me make sure everybody understands this and we're all on the same page. The hotel occupancy tax money, called the hot fund, is a statute by law that we can take 9% of the taxes from people staying in our hotels. 7% is what we get to utilize, 2% is dedicated towards the convention and visitors bureau at some point, the convention facilities at some point. Of that 7%, understand, 31% goes to the convention and visitors bureau. I mean, the convention center is the 2%, I'm sorry, from 7% to 9%, that 2% is the convention center at some point in time. It's set aside, it's not being used, and there's approximately $531,000 in that fund right now. We used a million or so dollars to do the rodeo arena and the restrooms last year, but there's about $500, half a million dollars in that fund for the convention center at some point in time. Of that other 7%, here's how it breaks down. 31% goes to the convention and visitors bureau. 15% goes to the arts, and that's by statute, and that's a maximum. We cannot give more than 15% at any point in time, no matter what we want to do, by statute, that's a maximum. That's the most we can give by this council. And this council, to my knowledge over the last number of years, has maxed that out every single year. And we will continue to do that, I'm certain, but the point being, it's a 15% max and we cannot go over that. The only way that number goes up is if our hot numbers go up. As those, when, last year, the hot numbers were $1,861,000. If those go up, then obviously the percentages of people getting monies go up as well. So that's how we need to understand that. We give 2.79% to sports tourism, Maude Cobb gets 50.13%, and on and on. But that, and you can see right here. So, understand that these monies are dedicated by statute as to where we place them. Now, within each one of these funds, there are also rules, regulations as how we can spend them. So, let's just take Convention and Visitors Bureau for example, because that's what we're talking about tonight. That money is meant to be spent on bringing tourism to Longview and putting people in our hotel rooms, because that's where it comes from. So that's how you have to re-insert that money into the community, to bring tourism into Longview, to spend money here, and that's how we get this money. So I just want everybody to understand that's where this thing breaks out, so that there's no misunderstanding about that as we move forward, okay? Sorry for the interruption. Our next speaker card, Victoria Wilson.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mack. Mr. Willard, City Councilman. Thank you, first of all, for explaining the hot tax. I don't know that as long as we've been talking about that, it's ever been put up in that form, and I think it's a, it's good information for people to know. First of all, I just want to thank the city offices, the environmental and how responsive that they've been, developmental offices, the police that come when you, you know, you're sitting on your deck where I live and you can't decide whether it's fireworks or firearms or guns. And also, I want to particularly thank Kasia, who is my representative, and doesn't matter what I ask her, what time I call her, when I text her, she gets things done, or she attempts to, or she gets back with me. And so I want to thank you personally and publicly for that. I just want to tell you that I do, I am here to support the transition from the CVB in the Main Street back to the city, although there will be, you know, there's going to be some challenges maybe in the transition period. The great thing about this is we don't have to reinvent the wheel. The Main Street program's been around for 30 years through the Texas Historic Foundation, and there are many communities since probably 2008 when they changed this, 2009, like Palestine, McKinney, Marshall, San Angelo, that have actually put these, re-inserted back into the city, and they've been very, very successful. What this will do, it will allow the city to be an umbrella, and therefore they can really begin to collaborate with community leaders, local boards and commissions, you know, the State Terrorism Office, LEED Co., the nonprofit organizations within the community. And what that will do is give a better understanding and towards the importance of economic development. And that's not only in our industrial parks, which is important, but also in our areas that we want to develop, like the downtown areas, to make them more inviting, as well as other areas of the community. Lastly, the monies. Everybody talks about the money. I know that when I was on the Arts Commission, that was something we really worked hard at doing, but when people understand the hot tax and the statute of it by the state, then they can see that to get more monies for those specific things, they'll have to be done other ways. But the monies that will come from this, that will go back into the city, will develop the projects within our community that will have tangible and intangible benefits. And they will be, you know, I've just seen this in other places, how it strengthens the communities, it engages in public participation, it improves economic management through the hiring of people that have some experience in how this is going to work. It also allows us to really market downtown as a fun place to be and to bring kids and grandkids and people that are visiting us. I do believe that Longview through this transition has the opportunity to create a really strong sense of place. This will allow us to capitalize on tourism in a larger arena. It will also allow us to develop a regional relationship with the communities around us, many in Gregg County, that have already been doing this for a period of time. And it also will allow us to continue to develop Longview so that it can be a destination for travel, a destination for retirement, community, education, and also job opportunities. So I'm very enthusiastic about this transition. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Ken Cunningham.
Mayor Mack, council members, I'm Ken Cunningham. I'm the Chairman of the Longview Chamber of Commerce. And I just want to tell the council, you know, it's a, it's an honor and a privilege anytime you're entrusted with public funds. And I want to tell you, it's been an honor for the Chamber to have been entrusted with those funds through the CVB and Main Street contracts. Obviously, I'm a little biased, I think that, and I do believe that the Chamber has been a good steward of the public funds, that they've done a great job with those. But I also know that the city has some very talented and fine staff. I know that we work at the pleasure of the city, all of us. And whatever the council's decision is this evening, the Chamber will respect that and will do everything in our power to make sure that the transition is a smooth one and that the city has the support of the Chamber in making that transition, even after the transition. There are going to be things that are going to be needed if the council so decides. And also to let you know that we view the city as a long-term partner. We're all here for the same thing, and that's to advance the interests of Longview, whether that is in the convention and visitor context, or whether it's economic development, we're all here to make Longview a better place. And the Chamber is in full support of that. And we look forward to many more projects that we'll be able to do with the city. We have a comprehensive plan that's newly accepted by this council, and there's going to be, there's going to be more than enough work to go around in moving that comprehensive plan forward. I look forward to us working hand in hand with the city to make that a reality. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. We appreciate you and your professionalism and all the Chamber and all that you represent. Thank you so much for speaking with us tonight. That's all the speaker cards I have on that issue. Does anyone else have a comment they want to make that didn't fill out a speaker card? Well, you're next, you're not this agenda item. Okay, thank you. Okay. So, council, discussion?
Well, Mayor, the, when I first saw this on the agenda, my first thought, well, my honeymoon on the council is over. But I wanted probably to table this, I can't speak for the other new folks, but I felt it probably needed more study. I want to thank Kelly Hall and Ron Hutchison for supplying me with the information that I needed to evaluate what we do now. Their salaries and their personnel costs under the contract do not seem out of line, but I'm not, you know, I'm not a tourism expert, so, you know, I don't know for a fact. I visited at length with staff and they have done quite a bit of legwork, setting up a potential organization, staffing, budget. And I guess what it all boiled down to after reviewing all this is, we have a fiduciary responsibility to oversee public funds. And in order to do that in a more effective manner, we need this money back. We can have more flexibility as to what direction we go, we can have more control over the operations. It was a difficult decision for me to come to in my own mind, but after doing the research I've done, you know, that's where I stand now.
Ms. Williams.
I think that this is a great thing for our community. We have, we are in a position as a city to pull all of the resources together. And in so doing, this allows us the opportunity to take our community to the next level. We are concerted as a council, we are focused currently. Tourism is a big deal, and we're missing dollars. And so this is going to give us those opportunities to do some additional things we need to do to market our community for what it really looks like. And, you know, and I have to say, I appreciate the things that the Chamber's done throughout the years, but I think that the city, having the CVB dollars back in our coffers, gives us a better chance to really capitalize wholly, because we have, we do have some talented staff people. And we may have to look elsewhere and gather some additional folks on hand. Hopefully, if everything goes as planned, we will. But I think this is a great time, this is a great opportunity. It's something different, but as our community continues to grow, we also have to look at other means, which, and other decisions we can make, in order to sustain that growth and continue to build on that. So, I would like to say, I think this is good for our community, and I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, may I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor, say a mouthful, sing aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, Ms. Williams is going to be excused because she is heading to Henderson to be installed as the Vice President of the TML Region 15. And so we thank you for being here, Ms. Williams. Have a safe trip. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance enacting a new electric franchise agreement between the City of Longview, Texas and Southwestern Electric Power Company. Jim Finley.
Mayor and council, the current electric franchise with Southwestern Electric Power Company, SWEPCO, is set to expire on November 12th this year. The city and SWEPCO, since last fall, have been negotiating a new franchise. The term of this new franchise will be for 25 years. It is required under the charter to be considered at two council meetings. This is the regular council meetings, this is the first council meeting, then it'll be considered. And again, it will be presented on August 13th, 2015. This basically covers the right-of-way that they operate, their utilities, and they use all the utilities in the city utilize their right-of-way. This is the last one that we will have for a long time. Some of you may have remembered, we did the gas franchises back in 2010. This is the last one. Cable went away through the state, and I would ask that we go ahead and approve it at this first read.
Counsel, any discussion? Yes. Yes, sir, Mr. Allen.
Oh, just a question. Do we have any numbers on the rates that we'd be looking at?
I can give you the audited amount that we received under the franchise fee last year for this franchise was, I'm just going to give you a rough number, $2.7 million. Currently, year-to-date, we have received about $2 million.
Now, is this just due with our franchise fees, or is this having to do with the regulatory on the retail rates to the customers that are paying their electric bills?
This is, this is apples and oranges. Retail stuff, the rates is something different, this is just for the use of our-
This is just for the, for the franchise to the city?
Use of our right-of-way, yes.
Okay. What other, we usually join a group in this, what are the other members of the group that we're with?
All cities operate, this is just our franchise for our specific city, but each city has a specific franchise with a utility for their right-of-way, use of their right-of-way. So this is not really a coalition thing, they deal with rate issues or jurisdictional issues. This deals simply with the use of our right-of-way here in Longview.
How does our proposed rate compare with others in the area?
It's generally, it's in line. We're, in 2003, we adjusted it, it was at 2% gross receipts, we went to 4% gross receipts. Now it's done by, and at that time, we changed it per kilowatt hour to comply with some aspects of the regulatory agencies and state laws that have changed, but it's in line. Most cities are, you know, anywhere from 2, 2 to 4, it depends.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I have a question, and this probably doesn't really deal with you, Mr. Finley, but I see in Section 4 of the resolution, talk about we grant SWEPCO permission to cut, trim, treat, and dispose of trees and other vegetation upon and overhanging the public rights of way. What concerns me is we spend a lot of money to beautify Longview. We spend money with the Keep Longview Beautiful. The comprehensive plan, to a big extent, is about making Longview more attractive to outside outsiders, people coming into the city of Longview. And then, and I know SWEPCO is regulated by the PUC, and the PUC requires them to do a certain amount of work to keep the lines free of trees so that we're not losing power all the time. But you drive down McCann Road now, or Spur 63, and you see what that looks like. It just seems to me that SWEPCO and the city ought to be able to work together to come up with some kind of plan so that all these beautiful, mature trees we have in this city aren't damaged all the time with the, with the constant trimming that we're doing. And I don't know if there's something we can work out there, if that's something that the city and SWEPCO can work on together, or if that's something that's been done already, but I would like to see something along those lines worked on.
But really how they trim their right-of-way, when they use that, is it's an integrity for their system, and that's a judgment call on their part, I believe it costs, in their reasonable opinion. Because they, they're required to make sure that the power gets to the customer, and they have to ensure that that integrity is there. And so, my understanding in the past, Keith Honey, who's our local representative, has been always available to citizens to discuss that, to work with them and to do that. I know a few years back in my neighborhood, they came down and did that, and I know they had people that were coming out and talked to people, and I can relay that to Mr. Honey and SWEPCO, that to continue that dialogue with them. But it's really to their discretion to make sure their system is taken care of.
Couldn't we, to that point, couldn't, I mean, in Section 4 that David's reading, I mean, that's where that language is, couldn't we change that language? I mean, I'm sure SWEPCO needs to protect, obviously, for the safety and the vitality of those utilities, but we could talk about amending that language to include something additional.
Yeah, and there's a, there, there is some, you know, we try to address it as best we can, because they know their system better than we do of when they need to have something trimmed, to where they may have other issues with a regulatory agency, either the state or the federal government, that it's best left with them, in their reasonable opinion to do that. And that's generally how I think this, this aspect of the franchise has been presented throughout East Texas, and it has, you know, that's the general language that we do. They, you know, we talked about that during this, and, you know, we try to set up and encourage mechanisms to where there's dialogue between SWEPCO and their customers to make sure that they're aware what they're going to, sometimes it's a difficult choice and it has, has to be done, it has to be trimmed, but in some ways, the utilities, the gas utilities, they, when they need to tear up a street to put something in, you know, you've seen that in town as well, too. That's part of the nature of this.
Safety needs to be the biggest priority, I agree, but it seems like right now is the time that we need to talk about this issue and maybe think about how to negotiate or provide some sort of oversight or additional input or something than we have right now. I mean, I'm with David, I get a lot of complaints about trimming when that happens, whether it's SWEPCO or any other utility that's cutting their right-of-way, and this is, I mean, this is the time that we're talking about the language, so maybe we need to do something additional to continue that.
It's your, it's your call, we can, I can go back, we'll have to start, we'll have to start the process over, because we, we, the way this works is we approve this tonight, then we have to wait 30 days to consider it at a next regular meeting. Then once it passes, then we have to publish it for four weeks, once a week in the paper for a month, and then it goes into effect 60 days after that. So, we will, I can do that, but we, and I think it's SWEPCO's opinion, because we have discussed how much control do we have, they believe they have, you know, the control that the Public Utility Commission mandates that they do this, and they have to do that.
Yeah.
I did speak with Mr. Honey, and I know he's more than willing to work with anybody, any house, anybody, any of the citizens who want, who want somebody to come out and talk with them before the trimming goes on, you know, occurs.
And I'll tell you, that's something that came out during these negotiations with SWEPCO, and they said, in the past, we've always worked with you, and they have. We've worked with them on regulatory issues, we haven't agreed, but, and then we've worked on other issues, little issues in town, David can speak to it as well, too, that people come to us and we direct them to Mr. Honey and to SWEPCO, and, you know, and they've, we've always had that long history with SWEPCO, especially with the years, that they've worked with us on issues, and I don't foresee that changing. I mean, they've always taken an ear, I don't know, sometimes they're not always successful in maybe pleasing somebody, but I think they do the best they can within the confines of the, of the rules and regulations that they have to work with. And I don't, I don't know how much more, you know, even if we said they couldn't do it, if there's a, if there's a state or a federal regulatory agency that tells them they have to do it, I mean, we're not going to be able to defend that, so.
Just to tag along with what Mr. Finley said, I do understand the question, we do receive some calls about that, but SWEPCO's been nothing more than a great partner, and we pick up the phone all the time and work back and forth, and they are concerned when they get those kind of calls and respond to those accordingly. The difficulty is, is that, as Jim said, they have the right under the, to take care of their power lines, and it would be very difficult for us to tell them how they have to trim their tree, you know, because they're the ones with the knowledge of that, and I know they're sensitive to that, and, you know, in our negotiations, it's, this is about as far as we felt like we could, you know, negotiate on that point unless there's, because they do have that right, and they have always, you know, been good to work and to try to visit with the citizens. So, I just wanted to reiterate what Jim had said.
Yeah, and when I was saying, I'm from West Texas- Yeah, and when I was saying, I'm from West Texas, we're fortunate. Our trees grow back quicker than they do.
One of us like that.
Yeah, you want mesquites cut down, honestly, but.
Well, I think, I think the bottom line is, we are, here in Longview, very fortunate to have a SWEPCO and a person like Mr. Honey, who will always hear from the citizens and always do their best to appease as they can. But we have to look at both sides of this. We obviously love the trees, and we like the way they look and all that, but if your power's out for a week, you'd wish those trees weren't there. So it's a double-edged sword, and it's a hard one to manage. But I think we are, we have to leave it to past, where SWEPCO's always done their best to talk with and take care of the citizens in the best way that they can, and I think they'll continue to do that. They've been a great corporate partner with us, and I think they'll continue to be that same partner. I don't see that changing anytime soon because of a renewal of a resolution.
Absolutely. I agree.
One other thing to go along with what the mayor just said. The area I live in, up till just probably the last year, consistently, anytime we had a light rain or any type of storm, we would lose electricity. And I think SWEPCO has gone into a, more of a procedure now, where they're trimming many more trees than they had before. And I don't, I think we've gone most of this year without electric outings. So it's, it's just like Mr. Finley said, you like the trees, but when you lose your electricity and all your food spoils, then you don't like the trees.
Counsel, I appreciate your input, and I appreciate your thoughts in looking into this. Thank you for doing your homework. Very good. Any other discussion? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Okay, next on the agenda, we have employee recognition. During April and May, the city of Longview conducted a major water maintenance project that impacted the entire water supply and distribution system, and ultimately resulted in improved water quality for all residents. We would like, at this point, to take time to recognize some of the employees responsible for this project. Mr. McThee, will you come forward and help us with this?
Yes, sir.
I know this doesn't seem like much, but let me tell you all something. We are so blessed to have good water in Longview and have a great supply of it. So I am, I am so glad that we, that we're here today honoring these gentlemen for the work that they do for our community.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, thank you very much for the opportunity that we have to recognize some of the people behind the scenes that normally don't get a lot of credit for the work they do. The thing that was interesting about this is this is a process that the city of Longview has never undertaken. It has, we switched to chloramines, which is a form of disinfectant. I won't talk too much about the details, but we switched to that back in the 80s, and we've never accomplished this process. And we were having trouble throughout the system maintaining the residual to a level that we felt comfortable with. So between April 20th and May 20th, the Water Utility Purification Group and the Water Distribution Group both got together, and we switched to free chlorine. These gentlemen worked tirelessly to change out the water that existed within our distribution system to free chlorine, which is much like shocking your swimming pool, for lack of a better term. And then they evacuated that water, combined with our citizens' use, and disinfected the entire system. The results of this project were a complete success. These employees executed it flawlessly, and for the most part, no citizens noticed a difference or change in their water quality. So, most of them were able to be here tonight. We have Albert Chapman, Quadre Snee, and I'm gonna forget a name as I'm going through it. So Patrick Burgess and Steve Hill, and Kenneth Tolbert, Roy Buchanan, Brian Richardson, Ray Rouse, Ronnie Hubbard, who has outdressed me tonight, and Robert Francis. The people that were unable to be here were Keith, let's see, Keith Murray, and we've got, there were two other people, I'm sorry, Matthew Powell, and there's one other I'm forgetting, I believe. It was under the guidance and direction of the two managers within the division, which are Mike Brown and Rick Evans, and teamwork among these two divisions has never been better. So, once again, thank you all very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Do I get to view the picture? Please, sir. Thank you very much, once again. Once again, thank you to all the hard workers in that water department. Okay. Now, we're to citizen comment portion of the agenda. I have a few speaker cards here. Mr. Buddy Stewart.
I have my favorite subject, streets. I found out why we don't have good streets. 64% of our budget goes to you and the fire department. That's weird. Now, we got the worst streets in town. If you haven't, if you don't think they are, you haven't been driving on them. The manhole covers aren't even with the street. They're above it, below it, not even there, maybe, holes. I've been trying to get this council, not these, but their council, to do something about them for years. Nothing happens. But we always have some wants. Oh, you all really coming with the wants. How about some needs? We need to fix the streets. Why do people want to come to Longview if they can't drive on the streets without tearing up the cars? You want to beautify it? What about the streets? What about the right-of-ways? Where's all this money going? Certainly not in the streets. Somebody ought to do something about it. That's part of your all's job, if y'all know about it. And a lot of stuff you do is none of your business, but you do it anyhow. A little group comes in and wants something, oh yeah, we'll take care of that. You're not supposed to. People take care of that. Once this council leaves taking care of the city of Longview, you're out of your bracket. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vic Verma.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council. My name is Vic Verma. I'm here tonight on behalf of Organizing for Action East Texas and Special Health, which I'm the regional lead, and Special Health Resources of Texas, of which I serve as a board member, our local clinic here in Longview. I was here to talk about the Affordable Care Act. This morning, the Supreme Court voted 6 to 3 to uphold the subsidies for both state and federal exchanges in the Affordable Care Act. It's a victory for those who get the subsidies because they will get to keep the health care coverage that they would have otherwise lost. I utilize this example because this provides us another opportunity to remind folks that now is the time to move forward and help others get coverage. Special Health Resources of Texas, for those who don't know, for the last two years, we have had a federal health care navigator grant, which essentially, in layman's terms, means we have navigators who can enroll people in the exchange for the Affordable Care Act. We've had one-year grants each of the last two years. This year, we were renewed for a three-year grant, so we're gonna be at it for the next three years, guaranteed. And our navigators are always looking for opportunities to speak to the public, to get the word out on our exchanges and how people can get enrolled. Open enrollment begins November 1st, goes through February 1st. But we are happy to talk to any groups here in the community about the ACA and how they can get enrolled. And if you know people need coverage, our navigators are the people to talk to. And we, with OFA East Texas, we help out with that as well. And in addition, there's a topic that always comes up, which we always wonder why we don't accept this, a lot of us, and that's Medicaid expansion. A lot of times, when we went to the legislature, they told us, "We can't consider Medicaid expansion because we're uncertain what the Supreme Court is gonna do." Well, that got taken care of today. And so, we're now urging folks in the community to also help us with the push for Medicaid expansion. It is our money that goes to Washington, DC, and does not come back to us. And the consequences are profound. The poorest of our citizens don't get health care. Our hospitals have to have more uncompensated care, and our economy here in Longview and Gray County does not prosper. It doesn't prosper to the level that it should. So please help us on both counts, as a community, whether it be through your churches, community groups. We'd be happy to talk to any groups, any churches, because we need to get folks enrolled, we need to get Medicaid expansion here in our state, and the more people that we get enrolled, it will help all of us as a community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Verma. Mr. Jim Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, counsel. First, I wanna, hope we elect the police chief that's sitting on now. I think he'd be a good police chief for Longview. Anyway, I have a lot of customers that complain, but they don't come down here and complain. They always complain to me. I talked to my councilman this week about it. He called me back. I'm not gonna say he finally called me back, 'cause no telling how many calls he gets, and he's a busy person. They were talking about the water cost going up. I can understand most of my customers, because they're retired, they own a fixed income. And it's not gonna bother me that much, but it is an increase in your expense of water. And I have four or five water bills. But anyway, something else I wanna, I was looking in the paper after some of them caught my attention of the garbage pickup cost that is going, because of fuel costs. Well, we had more fuel costs when we went to a one-day system of picking up, and we didn't get a cut in pay there. Now, I can understand, you can't go to the landfill once a week for what they charge for garbage pickup. I'm not griping too much about that, but I do not understand why, all the time, you go up and you get less. Then I heard somebody brought it up, and I guess it was in the article of the paper, that not gonna allow but so many sacks. But if that comes into effect, y'all have seen me here every council meeting complaining and griping and everything else, because that's crazy. I pass people that has one of those trash, $2.7 million of waste, and laying on the ground, 'cause their container's full. I think that new system, and I would, I still like to see somebody explain to me why that's better than what we had in the old system. Because the way I understand, most of them guys on the tailgate of that garbage pickup is $8 an hour, part-time help with no benefits. Well, here, we still running old garbage trucks and want to buy another one, and we still can't get it picked up in four days, which y'all said it was gonna be four days. Whoever, over the sanitation department, apparently didn't know too much about sanitation department. I don't know, or how many houses we had to pick up garbage at, which I think is, sometimes I wonder about people. They think they know what they're doing, and they really don't. They got a title here. And I run across a lot of people with titles, and that's all they got is a title. They can't explain nothing, but we'll use Andy Far, I'm the mayor. Well, I'm glad we got Andy Mack, because I know he'll listen, and he won't take offense to what I've always said. I can't say that for the other one. And that's okay, he's gone. But my councilman heard from me the other day, and it won't be the last time he hears from me. When I got a gripe, I'm gonna call. This dog shelter, I'm still trying to figure it out. We spent $460,000 for a set of plans to draw that dog shelter up, and I'm still trying to figure out why. We're gonna spend nearly $6 million, and I can understand a lot of things. I love animals, don't get me wrong. I love dogs, I love cats, raccoons. I love animals, and I feed a lot of them that's not mine. I had one time, somebody picked up 20 of my cats in my yard, 'cause one of my neighbors, I guess, turned it in. They left seven, 'cause they couldn't catch them, God bless them, and they're all gone now. So, anyway, I love animals. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take my animal down there and get my cat killed in 36 hours, my dog killed in 48 hours. At this place, we give $200,000 a year or two. I'm hoping that we don't have to hire 15 people full-time to do a job that we have people that love to do community service, because they're always in trouble. Or we got a hotel full of people downtown that's in trouble, that washes cars for the deputy sheriffs, and they work on the courthouse, that can do some of this work.
Mr. Martin?
I'm through. I understand. I knew I couldn't, I knew I couldn't say all what I want to in three minutes. Thank you.
Please come back to us, okay?
But I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay. That's all the speaker cards I have. There any speakers out there that haven't filled out a card? Yes? If you'd like to come speak, you can just fill out another card, please.
It's on the trees.
Come on.
It's Mike Snell, again. I live in the historic district. I do want to correct you on a couple things on SWEPCO. We hire an arborist to trim our trees. The trees that are trimmed by SWEPCO are trimmed incorrectly, which causes failure in the trees. In our historic district, if you'll go down on Turner by First Christian, the trees were trimmed like this in a big V. They hold the water, and what happens every time we get a storm is then a big section of the trees fall over and take out the power. So, SWEPCO, and we have a 40-inch oak on our property that the city does not have a right-of-way on. They have a power pole. We had to park our car there for three days to keep a splinter from cutting it. We called SWEPCO, and they send you to Atlanta, all over the place. They are not responsive. So if the city really wants to worry about power shortages, and they need to set up and have an arborist set a code for how the trees are trimmed so they don't die. If you notice, they're all on one side. I'm an operator in South Louisiana. When a hurricane comes in, if your tree is cut on one side, guess what happens? If the winds are in the right direction, they're gonna fall over. So you're gonna create more problems. So what I'm saying is, I understand you needed to have the franchise tax passed, but I think that somebody should have known, or at least investigated what an arborist would say when you make a decision on that. And when you talk about beautiful Longview, our building's got the Longview Beautification Ward, pat ourselves on the back, is it takes a lot of work to have pretty trees. You can make them healthy, but it should take some pre-planning on this town, and when you trim those trees like that, that is incorrect. If you talk to any registered arborists, you would know that. And I think it's just true, they subcontracted out. And if you've ever had your trees cut, and you try to get through to them, by the time you get through to anybody, they're already cut. So, it is a problem. I wish y'all would think about addressing, and I don't want you to pull your franchise deal, but it is a big deal. And the other thing is, is our neighborhood is National Historic District. When Dr. Black set it up, the trees are protected in that area as part of the National Historic District, as, along with construction and different things. And the city has actually come and hacked on some of my trees that we have an arborist take on. So, yeah, the people don't really know the rules, and if we really want Longview to be beautiful, we should have some kind of input to SWEPCO on how those trees are trimmed, not only for beauty, but also because they're not gonna live, and they'll cause a hazard when we get a storm that comes up from the Gulf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. Does one of the lady, please come forward.
She just filled out a card for me.
Okay, thank you. Please just state your name.
Sure. My name is Colleen Manoy. I'd like to make a comment on the previous motion that was passed concerning tourism. In moving forward, I'd like to challenge the city of Longview to consider the intricacies of what tourism is. Let's not just put ourselves in a box as far as, just considering just sports tourism. And even some of these topics may not fall under your purview, but let us consider mental health issues, homelessness. I have a store downtown, and interestingly enough, when I have visitors coming into Longview, they have a hard time getting out, even on they have a hard time getting out, even on Google Maps. So, please involve the business community on the different ideas, different forms of tourism. And one of the challenges that you may have is that you're probably going to have to work across the board, especially with the commissioner's court. Some of it doesn't fall under your purview, so let's stay open-minded, keep the business community involved, and let's not put ourselves in a box, because tourism can be broad-range. So, do not just consider sports tourism.
Thank you, Ms. Manoy.
You're welcome.
Keith, did you want to speak?
I can, I can.
Oh, it's up to you. I thought you raised your hand.
No, I didn't, man.
Oh, come on up, Keith, please. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you all for allowing me to speak. I'm Keith Honey with SWEPCO. And first of all, let me say it was, it's been great working with David and his staff, and Jim and his staff on the franchise renewal agreement. We, in fact, do employ arborists that do direct the way we trim trees. They do look at what's best for the tree and the health of the tree, and balance that with how we can best keep the electricity flowing to everyone. And it is a delicate balance, and I'm not going to stand here and tell you that every one of our trimming jobs looks like the best thing that ever happened. Unfortunately, you know, we are charged with keeping the electricity flowing to our customers, and we do have standards that are set for us by the Public Utility Commission in terms of reliability that we have to meet. So, we're caught in this sort of in-between land of if we don't provide reliability, we get fined by the Public Utility Commission. When we come back and trim trees, which are by far the biggest cause of outages for us, then, of course, we have people who are unhappy about that. So, I won't say we're perfect by any means, but we are trying to work more diligently to improve reliability. Trees grow very fast in this part of the world, as you all know. And we're trying to get on a cycle where, given some more money from the Public Utility Commission, which we've been successful in getting, we can get to a point where perhaps we don't have to do as dramatic a trimming, and we can do it more frequently in less dramatic fashion. So, I appreciate your understanding of that, and I am willing to work with anyone who has any issues or questions about it.
Thank you, Mr. Honey. Appreciate you. Okay. Anybody else? Last call. Okay. We'll go to presentation items. This is a presentation to Ed Moore for his service to the Longview Firemen's Relief and Retirement Fund Board from 1984 to 2015. Colby Beckham. Mr. Moore, take your spot, please.
I'd like to invite the rest of the Longview Firefighters Relief and Retirement Board up here, if Angela and Ms. Ishihara wouldn't mind stepping around. We have two board members that were unable to attend tonight, Captain Andy Parker and Captain Brian Jones. I'm Colby Beckham with the Longview Fire Department. I also serve as the chairman of the Longview Firefighters Relief and Retirement Fund. The fund is set up under the Telfra Act that was enacted in 1939, and that act basically set the guideline for what the board has to consist of, and part of that board has to consist of two citizen board members. There's 43 funds in the state of Texas currently, and out of those 43 funds, as we're going to talk about here in a minute, Ed Moore has served 31 years as our citizen board member, and that is the longest-standing citizen board member in the state. So, when he ran for council, it made him ineligible to fill the role as a citizen board member, and that's the only reason Ed's stepping down. Ed, for your service, we have a plaque here for you. In appreciation for your service and dedication to the Longview Firemen's Relief and Retirement Board, most tenured citizen board member for any Texas Local Firefighters Retirement Act and Fund. I appreciate your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Colby.
And we got you one other token of our appreciation. For 31 years of service, we got you a watch. We put our little emblem right there in the middle of it, and it's engraved in the back. Thank you very much.
And Colby, thank you for the presentation. And I'd like to recognize former councilwoman, Ms. Margot Tally. Margot, good to see you. Margot and I served together many years ago on the council. Nice to have you back in chambers.
Thank you.
Ed's wife, who allowed him to serve on the Fireman's Pension Board for so many years.
Thank you, Ms. Jean, because we know behind every good man is a good woman. Actually, my wife says in front of every good man is a good woman. Okay, we're to consent agenda. I would like, item A, pull to sidebar discussion, if you don't mind, and then we will, any other items to pull? There's only two. Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and ask for a motion on consent agenda B. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Okay, real quickly on item A. I would like to just make sure or clarify that this grant that we're applying for from the Justice Department does not give any federal oversight over our local law enforcement, such that, I mean, we all know there's no free money in the world, but are there any strings attached to this, to this grant? And if so, I'd like to know what they are. Thank you, Chief Dingerler.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good to see you, sir.
Council, Mr. Willard. This is a grant that we apply for each year. It goes through the Partners in Prevention. Holly Fuller, who is in charge of that, administers the grant, and they use it for crime prevention initiatives, and also contractual staff for that. The police department is allowed to buy equipment with this money, and so we get some equipment every year. It's not a large amount of money. There are restrictions on what we are able to purchase now through executive order, but the things that they restricted us from purchasing are not things that we would purchase anyway. We normally get what we need there. This year, we've asked for some basic equipment, some bags to hold SWAT gear and things such as that. The only reporting requirements are we have to do a quarterly report, and then there's an annual report. They keep up where the money goes. But as far as restrictions of the police department or oversight of the police department, this doesn't have any.
Okay. And you've been in this for years, correct?
Yes, sir.
And we've never seen anything where the government has tightened around us for any reason?
No, sir. The money first became available in the late 1990s, and we apply for these each year. There's never been any restrictions as far as the police department.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
You know the discussion on this?
Holly, would you want to just give a little brief via what Partners in Prevention spends their part of it on?
Certainly. These funds, as Chief Dingerler mentioned, we've been receiving them through the city since 1997, when it was first called the Local Law Enforcement Block Grant. In 2004, still under the Bureau of Justice Assistance, it was transitioned to what's now called JAG or Justice Assistance Grant. We have always used our funds for crime prevention efforts, and as Chief Dingerler spoke to law enforcement equipment that are allowable expenses under this grant. The grant amount is determined by BJA, the Bureau of Justice Assistance, based on three-year crime averages. So, each year, our funding is a different amount, but they let us know what we can apply for. So, that's why it's kind of an odd number, the 32,823. So, we will apply for that this year with your permission, and our funds through Partners in Prevention will be used to continue our partnership with the Longview Police Department with our East Texas Anti-Trafficking Team. Primarily from our part of the budget, it will be for contractual services for that position, as well as like for national night-out events and other things that we partner with the police department on.
Thank you, Holly. And I guess my biggest concern about this is, like I said, there's never, there's no free money. We understand that. And what I want to make sure of is, as we go forward with this council and with this group, is that when we do apply for grants and things like that, I want to make sure we are fully aware of any repercussions that could come upon us for that, because my preference is that we maintain as much local control over what we do as we can. I don't want the federal government telling us what to do any more than they already can do that. So, let's please be very aware of that as we move forward, and, you know, make sure we've all researched this, that we get these grants to us in enough time that we can do our research as well, and I appreciate all the due diligence involved with that. Thank you so much. Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to items of community interest.
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, we already did. Yes, sir. We did that first. Thank you, sir. Ms. Notte. Mr. Allen.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Wright.
Yes, I have something. I haven't had a lot of experience with the city in the past, and I've had calls about the roads and different things, and I've gone to Rawlin McPhee a couple of times, two or three, four times probably. And we also had some stuff, we worked with the police on some signs and all, and I just want to commend all of them. They do a fantastic job, respond pretty much right away to anything that I've, any kind of issues we have. And I want to thank you guys for all the hard work that y'all do, and for the way you respond as quickly as you do.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Ishihara.
I would second that. Thank you. I've had a great year and a great experience with all of the city staff I've gotten to work with. David was telling me that before the meeting, and I said, you know, that's been my experience throughout. Our city staff is incredible. They do a great job, whether it's me asking or a citizen calling, so I think that's really wonderful. I did want to take just a second and acknowledge, we've done it throughout the meeting, but acknowledge the great job that the chamber has done using our CVB funds and the Main Street money. Kelly's been an advocate for the city in all things, and also the board, and I think this transition has already been handled very professionally and graciously. You heard Ken speak earlier, and that's really a wonderful way that that's been handled. And I know that we'll continue to handle things that way as professionals and with the best interest of the city at heart. So, thank you to the chamber for many years of handling those funds well. I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that again tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ishihara, and I think we all ditto that, and we do appreciate the efforts, and we do appreciate the transition. And this, I think, is a very clear indicator of how we are going to move forward in collaboration with our community partners and how we're going to make this a very successful endeavor. I'm sorry, Mr. Allen.
No, no, it was fine. What David was saying, we've got a program here called City Send. I don't know if you're familiar with it, for the benefit of those who are watching on TV. If you'll take a picture of something and send it into the city, they put it on a map and they get back with you. It's a very good program. It's surprising, though, the people I've talked to, very few of them use it. So, if you have an item, trash, roads, whatever, and if you're not sure how to work the program, call up to the city and ask them, because it is available on the internet. Would that be the correct way to say it?
On your iPhone. It's an app on your iPhone.
It's an app on your iPhone. All right.
It's right next to the dinosaur.
Yes, that's right. But it is a very good program.
I have one, too. Don't worry.
Okay. It's a good program, and it's beneficial, and they flag the item and they get back with you. I think you, the people that are interested in improvements, it'd be a good program.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Willard.
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Just take a moment.
We've already passed you, sir.
Okay.
Please, please.
I would like to comment on the fact that Thrive 360 and the city of Longview, that partnership is working out great. I did get an opportunity to go by on Monday, so the Thrive 360 program is up and running.
Thank you for that update, Ms. Notte. Okay, the city of Longview is currently constructing a state-of-the-art animal shelter and adoption center, and we want your input on the name of the facility. Please email your name suggestions to nametheshelter@longviewtexas.gov. Submitted names will be considered by the Martin family, our generous naming rights donor, and the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. The city of Longview offices will be closed in observance of independence day on Friday, July the 3rd. The sanitation division will operate as normal the week of June the 29th. The Fourth of July fireworks and freedom celebration is happening in less than a month. Come out to Modcom Convention and Activity Complex for a day of family fun, music, and entertainment. At eight o'clock, Dubert McClinton will take the stage for a free outdoor concert, followed by the largest fireworks display in East Texas. Partners in Prevention and Longview Fire Department will host the Heroes of Tomorrow Camp on Saturday, July the 11th, and Saturday, July the 25th. This is a one-day camp for 7th through 12th grade boys and girls. For information, call Partners in Prevention at 903-237-1019. Okay, and lastly, I did a little online survey today, and I appreciate all of you all who responded to my survey. I'll do these periodically just to kind of see, I just want to see the tone of the citizens and see what's going on. Here was my question today. Why do you live in Longview? And your four choices were availability of jobs, quality of life, close to family, or never left. And the winner to that was close to family. Second place, quality of life. That says a lot about our community and where we are headed. I think that's a very bright indication of what's ahead for Longview. My second question, what was your favorite flavor of ice cream? Your choices were strawberry, chocolate, vanilla, pralines and cream, or rocky road. And by one vote, vanilla won. Chocolate came in second, and my favorite, pralines and cream, was third. So, thanks for the survey, and this meeting is adjourned.